I stand corrected.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Thank you. I, well, I'm Gloria Mills. I don't know, they call me the chair, but I feel like I'm just here to make sure that the meeting takes place, very nice little chilly day, but it's fine. I'm gonna go to my right, and let's see who's in the room.
Kemlee Green, manager of customer service and paratransit for Hart.
Greg Bracken, director of operations support, ADE officer for Hart.
Carmen Labou, Hillsborough County ADA officer.
Melissa Williams, ADA paratransit department.
Rachel Pinto, ADA coordinator for the city of Tampa.
Sandra Seidel, I'm a Hillsborough County resident, bus rider, Hart plus rider.
Linda Walker, service development department for Hart.
That's it?
Marco Sandusky with Hart.
Sharon Davis?
Matthew Davis, I'm a Hart plus user.
Okay.
That's it?
Yes, we have everybody.
Okay, do we have a quarrel now?
No, we don't.
Okay, so we're going to skip right now the, the reading of the minutes and the approval? And so, what?
Next? No, next we have, for this item, we have a public hearing for the Hart FY 2018 US Section 5310, enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals with disability, and Linda Walker has a presentation for us.
Wonderful. You're on, Linda.
Hello, I'm Linda Walker, and I'm here to speak with you about our application for the Section 5310, enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities application for fiscal year 2018. I'm giving you some background on the Section 5310, enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. The United States Government Department of Transportation apportions a part of their funds to Section 5310, and it's designed and intended to improve the mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities by removing barriers to transportation services and expanding transportation mobility options. It is a competitive funding application process. The applications are ranked, they are prioritized by FDOT. This year, we will be submitting two applications, as we did last year, one for cap, a capital funding request, and an operating request. The capital funding will be for vehicles, and the operating is to continue the customer choice taxi voucher program. And I'm just going to review the purpose of the hearing and give you a little detail about the paratransit vehicle replacement, talk with you a little bit about the budget process, and also open up the floor to comments. The purpose of a public hearing, Hart is requesting capital funding. This requires us to have a public hearing under the federal law. In order to receive these funds, we have to provide an opportunity for public input. We have advertised this in the newspaper. Of the type of vehicles that we will be purchasing, R C and G vans, they're estimated at eighty thousand each. Hart is also a member of the state of Florida consortium procurement process, so they are the ones, the state is the one that manages the contract. We will be purchasing five vans if we get the full funding. I'm gonna go over a little bit of the flow of the Section 5310 funds. They are federal funds from the Federal Transit Administration. However, in the state of Florida, the Florida Department of Transportation is the designated recipient, and they determine who gets the funds. Hart is a sub-recipient, and we, along with the, other public agencies in this district, apply for these funds, along with PSTA, and also private organizations that provide transportation for people with disabilities and seniors. We welcome all the comments. We will be receiving comments through November 30th, 2017, and we can receive the comments via U.S. mail. You can mail them to hart@1201East7thAvenueTampaFlorida33605, Attention Service Planning Department. And we can, you can also email me at walkerl@gohart.org, or you can call me at 813-384-6554. And I also will be here till the end of the meeting, taking comments, and I also have some comment sheets available if you, if something should come to you and you want to put it in writing. Now, I'm going to open up the floor to the public to speak on the Section 5310 grant application.
Question?
Yes.
Ms. Walker, the age, I, I've heard disabled, disabled elderly persons, what does, when does age, is it sixty or sixty-five?
Actually, it's for all seniors, I think it's over sixty-five, and anyone with a disability.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter how old you are.
Was it, yeah, it was with somebody with a disability, whatever age, I got that. Sounds like a good program, 5310 is all over. Any comments? What's the question?
Well, it's not really, it's not really related to 5310. I'm not.
Oh, okay, okay.
I do have a question. Is, is the funds that you're requesting, is this an increase from previous years? Is it a decrease? Is it the same?
Actually, we have increased our request for the taxi voucher because, you know, we have a demand for trips, but we are required to match at fifty percent. And with the capital funds, you are only required to do the ten percent match.
And is this the public hearing now?
Yes.
Okay. And you said that you actually had advertised in the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay. So, for people with visual disabilities, I don't know, and many times, individuals with visual disabilities, you know, they're relying on the public transportation services and such. So, as a recommendation, and for future public hearings, is it possible for you to outreach to some of the disability organizations, to notify them of your public hearing? I think they would be very interested in, in participating and knowing what's happening.
Oh, sure, I can get with our public relations department and distribute that information.
All right, all right, thank you.
I will make one more comment, and again, this is constructive, not that you did find, you, you put it in the newspaper, but the day of the newspaper is almost over. I think people, especially young people, are getting their news in other ways than the newspaper. I know the reason we buy Sunday paper at my house is to get the coupons, not to get the news, and that's just a sign of our times. The, I get the news from being online, or being on the radio or TV. So, I just offer this as a suggestion that you do, as the lady said, to put it into the disabled, different organizations, so that they can send out the word to their members.
That's a good idea, and I, I will do that in the future, and right now, I can do it too, so, thank you.
And just for the record, on our website, anyone requesting materials for the visually impaired, all they have to do is call us, and we'll ship them directly to them. Melissa takes care of that, Kemlee, on a regular basis. So, anyone asking for a large print, or a PDF file that they can open on their readers, or whatever the case may be, we do accommodate those on a regular basis.
Linda, you said a public comment still open until what date?
Until November 30th. We will be submitting the application in January, that's when it's due.
Thank you. There's no public comment. So, we can go on with the reports, if you'd like.
Let's go with the reports, it's Marco Sandusky here.
Well, we have the chairman's report first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep skipping things.
Don't skip yourself.
The chair, the chair doesn't have a good report. I've been trying to ride and try to find out the new routes and how they're working, but for one person working on that, it doesn't work really well. I haven't started working on the cabs yet, but the three, three or four times I've had to use a cab, they've worked out and they've come, they've actually come. I was having trouble getting them, to the point where after forty or fifty minutes, and you're trying to be somewhere, I canceled one. And we did have trouble in August with my husband trying to go to the emergency room, not being able to get one. But, I mean, the last, let's say, October, November, the cabs have been better. But, I'm anxious to hear how, how the people are responding. Are people finding their buses? Are, you know, the new routes, are they working out? There's Armenia Avenue number fourteen, I'm not sure that's the name of it, but it's a new bus that comes by. I actually have a new bus that comes by my, my house, and it stops down about two blocks from me for, I think it turns on Swan and goes downtown. And I'm particularly, I have not been on, yes, I have been, I shouldn't say I haven't, I've only been on it for a very short time, but I'm just anxious to know if that bus is doing well, is, is picking up new, new people, new riders. So, basically, my report this time is a, is more of a question than it is of facts that I've been able to collect. I think it's, October the eighth, it's just the fifteenth, sixteenth today, there's not been enough time maybe to glean a lot of information regarding the changes. But anyway, that is the way I'm going to end my report. I really, I'm hoping that, that you all can answer some of my questions, if not all. Thank you.
Yeah, and Marco was gonna give us an overview, but in general, also, you know, the service development team has been assessing, and they're getting all, still feedback from the community. We're, we're looking at time points, and how we're doing, and how everything is running, and they are considering, you know, considering some of these comments for the upcoming changes next year. So, what we could do in the next report, we could add some stats of, of how that's doing, because at this point, we're still observing, you know, it, it takes a while when you first start a system, you know, there might be things going on, you know, that would affect it, so, and also, this time of year, sometimes we expect, we experience a little bit lower ridership because of the holidays, so we can probably have some better numbers for you in the upcoming report, but we have Marco ready for his report.
Good afternoon, committee. My name's Marco Sandusky, I'm the director of government and community relations for Hart. I'm pleased to come before you and just share with you an update on Mission Max, the rollout of our service changes that went into effect on October 8th. As you know, I came to the, to this committee at your last meeting, before Mission Max, to share with you an overview of the proposed changes that would be going into effect. Now, we're just over a month into the, into the new network, as it was implemented on October 8th. You know, the, leading up to those changes on October 8th, we really did, Hart did an unprecedented amount of outreach. We had a lot of opportunity to hear from customers about what we proposed to do, to make some adjustments based on some of the things we heard from customers, and then to continue to hear and listen to customers about how we can make the new network work better for them. So, in all, I wanted to give you kind of an overview of, of our outreach effort. In all, we distributed over eighteen thousand flyers through this process. We did one hundred and fifty-six different outreach activities, where we were out talking to customers about these changes. That was over six hundred and thirty-seven hours of outreach, and in all, we almost, we reached nearly twenty-nine thousand people, where we really engaged with people around these changes. Twenty-nine thousand engagements is, is a lot, and, and so, we feel like we have had a good opportunity to, to listen to customers, to answer questions, and to continue with, with the dialogue. So, with that being said, you know, as you, you probably recall, leading up to the, the changes, we made some adjustments to the, the proposal. At one point, we had proposed to eliminate the Brandon Flex, and, and we reversed on, on that proposal, and the Brandon Flex continues to operate. We made some other, you know, modifications, we added the Route 42 north of Fletcher, and, you know, we want to continue to hear from our customers and make adjustments in order to make the network work better for them. We're one month in, so it's still early, as Ms. Mills and, and Ms. Green said, it's early in some respects to have a, to have a good sense of, of how the new network is performing, because you can't really glean a whole lot from just one month of data, but overall...
Marco, I'm, I'm so sorry, I do want to, this is Ruthie, I'm sorry I joined a little late, but I wanted to give a little bit of small feedback about some of the productivity, just because you mentioned the Route 42, and it's sort of a higher indicator to us when something is significant, and we should so speak on it. And the Route 42, while newly developed and encompassing some of the area that we covered in the past, as it turns out, has the second highest ridership per hour, based on all of our current routes. So, while it's a small segment of the rides that we do in, in the service area, because it's a, it's a very shorter, much shorter condensed route, it is doing pretty significantly well within the system, so I just thought I wanted to hand that tidbit out there.
There certainly are elements that are, that we see are working well, some of the new routes that we added, like the 60 LX and the 360 LX, those new limited express routes that run hourly from the Brandon area. Those routes are really doing quite well, the, the productivity on those is really good, but we also, we're, we're trying to be, while we look at data constantly, we also have to be cautious about drawing too many conclusions from, you know, a really small data set. So, we're, we're continuing to look at, at, at the data to see how it can help us to refine it. So, now, from a, a planning perspective, we're turning to some of the adjustments that we need to make, based on how, what we've, what we've heard through the rollout from October through, through now, what we've seen from how people are using the system, what we're seeing with ridership, and what we're seeing with, with on-time performance. There are some adjustments that need to be made in order to ensure that the schedules that people have are more consistent with how the runtime for the route actually is. So, we'll be making some adjustments to schedules. Our next service change, schedule change, is gonna be in January, it will be the end of January. At this point, I think it's scheduled for January 28th, which is a Sunday. And in that service adjustment, we will make some schedule tweaks. Some of the routes, as they're scheduled now, they're scheduled on paper. There are times of the day when congestion on the road affects our runtime, and where we, we need to make some adjustments to the schedule, so that what the customer sees on their schedule is, is more consistent with how the route is actually operating. So, we'll be making some schedule adjustments. We'll be adding some additional improvements to the service. So, Hillsborough County, thanks to the, Hillsborough County Commission, has appropriated just over two million dollars to help enhance Hart service, to add some frequency on some core routes. So, in January, you know, we, we've said from the beginning that Mission Max was about building, kind of laying the foundation that we could build upon, so we could add additional service, improve the network. So, at the end of January, we'll, we'll be moving forward with some more of these improvements. So, we'll be adding, the Route 6 will go to fifteen-minute frequency on weekdays. The Route 34 is gonna go to fifteen-minute frequency. The Route 46 is gonna start, is gonna go from hourly to thirty-minute frequency. We'll be making an, an adjustment to the Route 46, so that it will remain on Brandon Boulevard, instead of making the deviation down to the hospital. That will help improve its, its runtime, and the hospital will continue to be served by Hart Flex, and also, it will be a, a node for hyperlink. We, we're, we're looking at making some adjustments to how that 60 LX works, so we may split that, so that it can, its on-time performance can, can improve. We're, we're looking at an adjustment to the Route 19, where we're, we're operating a shuttle now between downtown and Tampa General Hospital. We're looking at some options to fold, fold a connection into the Route 19, so that you can make a much easier connection within the, the Route 19, and not a separate shuttle to connect from downtown to Tampa General Hospital. So, that's a, a quick overview of some of the things that are planned for the next markup in, in January. We will continue to, to be out talking with the community, we welcome opportunities to come out and speak with groups that might be interested, so please let us know if, if you have a group of folks who would like to hear from us on the changes, and would like to share some comments. We're happy to do that, but we'll continue to be out in the community, talking to people and listening to their comments about the new Mission Max network.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
One question. In the shuttle from Tampa, what kind, what kind of bus are you in? Train bus or the big long bus?
For the, the shuttle from downtown to Tampa General Hospital? So, you're asking about how it's being used?
No, it's, what kind of bus?
What kind of bus? It's a regular forty-foot bus.
Because I know that when, when they had the, the trolley go down in between, because it was in the road, whatever, they used a train bus, and it kind of hard work to get it along now, to get along now, that's the reason I had.
Okay. Yeah, so that, that Tampa General Hospital shuttle's being operated with a forty-foot bus. The in-towner trolley bus that we operate is used for that in-towner service in downtown, and we're using it for the 75 LX, which is that route from South County up to Brandon Mall. It operates on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but that's it.
The in, in, the trolley is very hard work to get it along now.
Okay. Okay.
On the Route 19, I haven't been downtown on it, even though I ride it daily usually, is it, it goes, at this time, it goes to Tampa General Hospital on the trip in, but it doesn't do that on the way back, it has the shuttle then? Is that correct?
Right. That's right. And the shuttle right now operates between, it, it goes back and forth between Marion Transit Center and Tampa General Hospital. Our intent is to, instead of operating that separately, to add back in, just like the 19 used to be, add back in the, the southbound connectivity from downtown to, to Tampa General. So, it'll go back onto the island, just like it used to.
Any more questions? Thank you very, very much, Mr. Sandusky.
Thank you for having me. Have a good afternoon.
I have something.
I have something. Okay, very good. Then Kemlee?
Mr. Rodriguez sends his apologies. I do have his update regarding the shelters, to kind of follow up in what Marco was talking about. Mission Max made available for relocation a hundred and sixty shelters due to route consolidation. Of those, eighty-one shelters belong to Hart, and seventy-nine shelters are maintained by Signal Outdoor. The eighty-one shelters that belong to Hart, thirty-three, are, we will not be able to use them because of their age and their condition, so that leaves us with forty-eight shelters that are, that do belong to Hart. In regards to replacement shelters, sixty-seven right now of our shelters that we have in place have met their life, and we can't maintain them anymore. So, those are the first ones that will get replaced with the Signal Outdoor shelters. And I believe what Mr. Rodriguez was saying is that then what we'll do is, after those ones that are replaced, that we will continue on with the plan and assess what shelters we can place. But, the good news is, we will have, we have more shelters on hand now, because of Mission Max and some of our consolidation, and we'll be able to have a better plan to relocate a shelter.
And, and if I would add, that discussion is also being had, that while we have this opportunity with these additional shelters, is to go back to the prioritization list that many of you served on when we had the bus stop study many, many moons ago, when it was just a task force. And so, sticking with those standards and looking realistically, between location, how many boardings are at those stops, you know, the, the number of transfers made there, and integrating all of that data, and looking at it from the perspective of where we can, so to speak, legally place something when we have the, the location that's accessible to put in a shelter. In other words, that we're, we're given rights and can get permitting there as well. It's not as simple as just plotting one down in the ground, we have to go through some permitting processes here, and working with certain business owners or property owners in order to do so, and so we'll continue to evaluate those and go back to that prioritization process, and trying to bring those amenities on various routes, where we've heard from our customers as well.
Very good. Thank you. I believe that Mr. Bracken is next.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we've had a very exciting last month, so we've been watching the numbers very closely. Couple of numbers, just to be familiar with, our paratransit saw an increase over last year. Last year, we did thirteen thousand four hundred and eighty-eight trips in October. This October, it was fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine, so almost a fifteen-hundred ride increase over our performance of last year, which continues to grow, you know, grow for us. Taxi voucher, again, successful as it can be. Went from forty-seven, forty-seven sixteen last year to six thousand eight hundred and eighty-six, that's a thirty-two percent increase over last year at this time. Our hyperlink, we made some changes in October, we are allowing our customers connecting with a bus to, the fee went down to one dollar, and if you're riding it inside the zone from one pickup point to one dropout point, it's a three-dollar fare. Plus, we relocated the Carrollwood Zone over to Temple Terrace, and we're glad to report that we had almost a fifty-five percent increase over the previous month. So, for this month in October, we did three thousand six hundred and twenty-three trips on hyperlink this month, so that's a, a huge increase for us, and, you know, it is what we expected when we originally rolled out the plan, but I think we just found our niche in our area that it needed to be served, so. And it also is helping out where some services were curtailed during the remix. So, and it also is helping out where some services were curtailed during the remix of the Mission Max service enhancements. So the Hyperlink was able to pick up some people that were, service was removed from them in the previous markup, so. Yellow Cab, for the month of October, 6,886 as I said before, and of that, 2,849 were wheelchair trips. So a third of the trips are wheelchair trips being performed by Yellow Cab. I've been in contact with them, as you all know, for the last couple of months on some service issues, on timeliness of service. And I'm glad to announce that they have actually hired some of their own employees rather than contractors. So they have a select few right now that's totally dedicated to Heart Plus that are not contractors, that are not looking at the fare structure and all that, all those other things they're going right to and picking us up. And I think from, I talked to Sandra and Gloria and they've noticed some changes here in the last month on timeliness. So hopefully they got our message across and, you know, we're delaying the bid out for a couple of months for the rebid of the services as we go out and look at restructuring this so we can make it the best for our customers and try to eliminate some of the perceptions that are out there on the service delivery. So we continue to work on it every single day. We call back our customers and they're doing surveys and see what their service is like. We are even probably going to start some secret riders and get some riot checks out there and let the, let us know. So, well, they all know you all. They know you're on our board. So, yeah, we're looking at doing that as well here in the next month. So, you know, that was some things that we thought would help with our quality assurance process as well. Please keep your information coming. If you have any issues with them, make sure you let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm next with IVR, please.
So I wanted to give you guys an update on the IVR, which is a system, basically the automatic system that answers our phones. We did launch the first phase, so we no longer have Ruthie's voice. Sorry.
Since 2006. Thank you for calling Heart. The current time is, and you won't hear that anymore. I almost mourned on the day it happened. I was like, that'll never happen again.
So the first phase was launched and the highlights of that is basically the automatics schedule information for buses. So now customers can call in, they can choose their bus, the bus information and get the scheduled time. At the, when we first launched it, we were giving every single stop and we got some great feedback from some of our customers saying that, you know, if they were waiting for the last stop, it was taking them too long to get, to listen, to go through the whole prompt. So we did do that change pretty quickly and right now we just have the main stops and, as it was before, and people can listen instead of, if they don't want to speak to a representative, they can just call in and listen to what the scheduled time is. Another neat feature too is now you can also automatically, it can send you to the one-bus-away call system where it will give you real-time information. So we have the schedule, but we also have the real time that is linked to the buses via GPS. So it lets us know exactly, you know, how long it's going to be before the bus comes. Right now, we're working on the second phase, which is the testing for Heart Plus, and I know a lot of people were looking forward to that. I wanted to thank Ms. Mills, Ms. Idell and Mr. Jenkins for volunteering to help us with the testing. We probably, I know we were going to originally do the testing with you guys and booking trips this week. I did reach out to you guys to let you know that we're going to do it after Thanksgiving. Right now I'm doing some heavy-duty testing with it and there's some tweaks that we're still doing. So we're expecting to be able to have you guys and a few more customers do some more testing and do some booking, which is pretty neat. You, we're going to reach out to everybody, send letters probably in December to remind everybody of their customer ID number. So if you have your customer ID and you have some frequent addresses in your file, you'll be able to go through the automated system and book that trip without the need to speak with a customer service rep, which comes in pretty handy in the hours of 4:00 to 5:00 PM when we have a lot of calls coming into the call center. Then the next phase is coming up. It might happen in December, I'm going to say January, but it's the one that everybody really has been asking for. And we will have some type of courtesy call where the system will call all our Heart Plus customers and let them know that the van is approximately, or estimated to be there in 10 minutes. So that call will be in place. We are trying to update everybody's phone, make sure that they have their cell phones on there so they'll get it every time. And we have been working pretty hard in updating everybody's phone number and making sure that the phone number they want is there and they'll get that call. Again, estimated call, so they, you know, if after the call there happens to be a traffic jam or a little accident, we might be a few minutes later, but I think that's great news and something that everybody was looking forward to is getting that call and letting you know that the van will be there in 10 minutes.
I just want to say that after many years of talking about the IVR, it's probably going to be my legacy thing as I talk about myself at Heart one day because it took eight years of discussions about updating that IVR internally and externally. Many of you have heard us talking about improving and updating that system. So I think it's, it's finally happened. Like I said, we were super excited to launch the first end of it. We would have liked to have seen it launch all at the same time, but I made the sort of reluctant decision to say, go ahead and launch with just the fixed route portion because I didn't want to delay it any longer. We wanted to be able to provide the up-to-date information about the current systems through Mission Max and it launched that weekend prior. And so that was very effective. And so now I'll announce the next phase of that whole project, which is Pass Web. We were awarded a grant that will allow us to buy the software that will connect the booking piece on our website. So for those that are willing to use the website to book their, book, schedule or cancel their trips, that'll be the next functionality that you'll see coming out. And I would say, without promising anything, that I think our service planning, our service development group is working on that in collaboration with another couple of functional pieces, including how you pay your fare potentially with the fare app or through our phone system, that you'll be able to also book these trips and that's all part of the upgrade to, our software is called Pass through Trapeze, which is our provider that we use for booking trips. But it also has many features for trip booking, not just what we do internally, but trip brokering when you hire several providers and you can book through us and we can book it to Yellow Cab for you at some, at some point. That may be how we go down the road. But more importantly for me was the piece that we attach to it, like when you buy a vehicle, it comes with, you know, power mirrors and heated seats. You might not need the heated seats here in Florida, but you like the power mirror. So the bundle for Pass Web brings that, the brokerage piece with it, or maybe the brokerage piece brings the Pass Web, but either way we benefit from it. And so we'll be launching that at some point. So again, there will be testing and volunteers and folks that will be looking at, looking into that. And naturally we want to be able to have it work on mobile devices, not just from a desktop environment. So we'll be looking at pieces there as well. So I feel like I'm announcing something that'll be like 10 years away, but we're closer than that, but because it took so long with the IVR. But essentially we were given about a $100,000 grant, we were awarded on that project. And so that really gets us, it's really a question of a module or an add-on piece to what we already own, so.
Have you checked out the accessibility of it for people who might use this as a technology under computers?
It's designed for that reason and so it's, it's a functional piece that works with the Trapeze program, which is specific to on-demand type of service. So that's part of the process and testing and implementation, yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, the call center reps will still have jobs. And so I just want to say, because every time we talk about all the technology, I just have to say that sometimes our employees get a sense of anxiety because at some point we're saying, well, you can book it on the phone or you can book it on the internet and you can do this and do it on your mobile device. But we still need our person, our live person to answer your calls when none of those fancy tricks will work for you.
There are always times when people are emotionally upset or scared that they're going to need to talk to a human voice.
I'm the worst person to call a call center. I'll keep pressing zero until I get someone, so. I don't want to go through the prompts. I want to get right there.
We just got one question.
Yes.
The no level, no level bus, they come up first, no doubt.
I apologize.
I think autonomous vehicle.
What is the question about it?
When will it?
I thought we were just meeting about that. We're probably looking at somewhere in the, in the launch of the new year. We were highlighting and looking at the end of January, but we do still have to do some testing with that as well. And I put my ADA hat on since they started talking about it about two years ago because my concern, again, even with the vehicle technology, you still have the human component for serving the customer onboard. And obviously, when you have such technology out there, I just came back from a conference yesterday, two days in, just on the other side of Bay, and a technology conference specifically on this type of technology. And the one thing that they're never going to achieve with typically just technology is the human element of observing a customer's needs. And so while it is an autonomous vehicle and it has this wonderful technology, it sees better than we do, it hears better, it connects with the streets and the system so that there are fewer crashes and safety components are incredible comparative to what your vehicle uses on a regular basis or for the personal basis, even though the technology has improved in vehicles. There's still a matron or an attendant that will be onboard initially because we've got to sort of learn the environment as a customer and as an operator. So there will be an attendant onboard probably through the first phase, through the first year. You know, how many of us would get in if we didn't think anyone was driving or someone could stop it if it had to? And so first you have to observe the environment. It needs to learn, like it's artificial intelligence. And while it's built with a lot of technology and a lot of data info sets that are built into it, including the path that it's going to travel and where it needs to stop and how to observe traffic, but it still needs to observe the human element. And how do you board someone if they're in a wheelchair or they have a visual disability or some other challenges that present a bit more assistance than just an open door? So for that reason, it will have an attendant and obviously for the safety reason that if the vehicle decides to go rogue, you can hit the stop button to stop it, right? So, I mean, just be honest, it's technology and things can malfunction. Let's just say it that way. It has to learn, it has to have the bugs taken out of it. And from a safety perspective, they just had the launch of an autonomous vehicle in Las Vegas on the strip and on its first day out it got into an accident. And the news was like, oh, autonomous vehicle got into an accident. Well, it didn't crash something, something crashed it. A truck that was going into reverse, cut it too tight and backed into the corner of the front end of the car. And that wasn't demolished, it was probably a boo-boo scrape, you know? But in the meanwhile, the next day their fabulous marketing team put a giant Band-Aid on the front of it and said, "Human error." And because it was human error, it cost it. From that perspective, but that can happen. And so while the vehicle is traveling among the dedicated Marion Transit Way, which is just to our transit vehicles during the day, it still has to cross intersection, a stop sign and a railroad crossing. And so it can be responsible for itself, but you couldn't say that for all the other things it has to encounter along the road, so. But it's, it's time.
Let me know, I won't be the first one to do it.
You know what?
He wants to be the first one.
Oh, you volunteer already, put everything out. For, you know, for reference, my husband mentioned Johnny Cab from a movie in 1990 and I was asking him, do you think that the movie drove the technology or the technology drove the movie? And it's interesting because it's autonomous vehicles, with the fictitious cab driver that pops up, it's interesting. So, and here we are, and it's only 2017, right?
Public comment. Public comment. Do we have anyone who would like to speak for three minutes? Have a comment, a pleasant comment or maybe?
We have somebody.
Great.
Right near? Hi, my name is Matthew Davis. I, back on October 2nd, moved to Bay Shore, right off of Gandy and Zion, not too far from the McDill Air Force Base. And when preparing to move with my parents, that we all looked into, you know, Heart Plus and Paratransit. And at the time, I would have gotten door-to-door service, but of course October 8th happened, all the big changes and Route 4 was changed. But I was told that if you lived at an address before the changes, that you would be grandfathered in. And I've, you know, gone back and forth trying to find the proper documentation. The problem is, is that I don't get a lot of mail. I do all my payments and stuff online, all those records. And what I have here today is a letter from my Division of Blind Services Counselor, who is authorizing that I did move in pre the changes. And I was just wondering who I would, who would be best to give that to, to get to the right person to, you know, get some things moving.
I apologize. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
My name is Ruthie Reyes.
Right, yeah. I called you last week, I believe, yeah.
Sorry if I haven't spoken to you yet. I'm going to defer that you speak to Kenley Green when we're done with this meeting and...
We've already spoke, yeah.
We'll get this taken care of for you. Kenley Green is going to help you with this.
Okay.
Thank you, Ruthie. This is Cheryl Brown with Tampa Lighthouse for the Blind. And they have been trying to go through all the channels and getting nowhere. And at the board meeting, I spoke of an employee that's moved three times and every time they move, the bus changes. And it happens every time you make a change and it affects a job. And when Sheri and Stuart and Matthew and Ellen moved to town, Matthew was a little boy and they lived off of Lutz Lake Farm. And for his benefit, as he graduated from high school and college, they had been trying to sell their house and the housing market crashed and they were taking him different places to catch Heart Plus because he's been working with us in job placement. And so it was great news when they finally sold their house and moved. Not so great to find out once they moved that he doesn't have a bus, thus he can't get to work. So anything you all could do to help them, I would voucher them to that they moved. I wasn't even talking about him when I talked to the board meeting because there were other people like the gentleman in Temple Terrace that says, "If you take my bus, you're taking my job." So I wish the gentleman that reported on Mission Max was in here now, but every time you make a bus route change, probably going to affect somebody and he's one of them that he has no way to get to work. So anything you can do would be great. And we've been getting, I meant to, I was going to call one of y'all and I never got a chance to, but we've been getting a lot of complaints since Mission Max on the bus audible announcements not working and the one-bus-away being off, that if it says that the bus is five minutes away, it may be 15 minutes away. And I've heard him say that there were timing issues, so maybe that's the case, but those are the, besides his situation and the guy in Temple Terrace, that's the main issue we've heard. And I've heard a lot of complaints about Tampa General, so I think that'd be great if you all can put it back on 19. They said it's just very confusing downtown with that.
It will definitely be going back. It's not a day if it's a web. And we'd like to do it sooner than later, but we're working through the process.
Good.
Operationally it behooves us to move it back on D4, on the regular route and take away the shuttle, make it one.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Greg has some info on the announcements.
And Cheryl, you are correct, our service development switched our audible exterior announcement voice and it was not...
Not working.
Detained. You couldn't understand it. So we have deleted that whole system and we went back to our old spoken voice that we had before.
Okay, good.
And they have to add the new service stops that weren't in there previously, so they have to go to a recording studio and make those changes. But we are back to the old voice, already on the fleet, so you should see that improved since last Tuesday. So we did get that same complaint. We actually went out and rode, went to the... We actually went out and rode, uh went to the transit centers and it, it was very incertifiable that it wasn't working for us. So we made that change back to the old voice.
Great, great. I haven't heard anything recently. Actually, our O and M instructor was gonna be here today and mention it, but they couldn't be here, so I'm speaking for him.
Um one bus away, the one thing also beyond if the route is running late, because there are a few th- uh few areas where we know and observe that there have been um some delays due to the way the route is routed, that we're encountering more traffic. And then as we get closer to the holidays, I can't even tell you what that looks like at the Brandy Mall and those kinds of areas. But um there have been some folks that reported one bus away issues to us. And Shannon Haney, our one bus away program manager, has discovered that uh depending on what operating system you're using, you may need to upgrade the app. And so sometimes it's not, i- it doesn't give you the option to upgrade and then you really just need to uninstall and reinstall.
Okay.
Um because in actuality, what happens is it, it sort of freezes and it has hangups in places where it's skipping a beat, if you will. And it's not capturing the new data. Because the, the statistics that we see internally as we're looking at it on a computer versus a mobile device is that you're getting, um we, we um programmed that you can get within three minutes of accuracy. But we're really seeing within less than a minute of accuracy. I mean, if you stand on the road and you have the proper scheduling and it, and it's working, you're getting very accurate. Cause it, it, it um updates every thirty seconds, giving you fresh data. So if the system gets hung up, sometimes it's within the phone. And iPhone has been a little bit more in, in the stuck process of those hangups and the um sounds. So I'm sorry, cause she's an iPhone and I'm a Samsung person.
I know. Well, that's, that's the person that was complaining was a iPhone.
And I don't, and I'm not, I'm not standing behind either product at this point because they both have problems. Like I'm just saying that what we've heard from folks is that when the, those that have had to reinstall it in general, the iPhone platform came secondary. Because iPhone has a proprietary platform, it's not something that some developer can easily add to without working with Apple first.
To do it?
So, yeah.
And then second is, uh if the vehicle loses connectivity with the one bus away app, it goes and estimates by its published scheduled time. So you may see them jump because they lost, you know, connectivity to the vehicle. And then all of a sudden, it finds the vehicle again and it updates it. And it went from eight minutes late to now twenty minutes late because it actually found the vehicle and it updated work.
Right.
And, and when they go on detour, by the way, it definitely is not giving you a schedule. Because it, it has a fixed line li- by GPS points of anywhere that it travels. So whatever the route is, all those are fixed longitude and latitude points. When you deviate even one block, you're not going to get the real-time info. So if there's a fire or there's an accident and we're asked to deviate and such is the circumstances recently that we've been put on detour with Seminole Heights. Um yeah, we've had a number of routes that are not publishing correct times.
One bus away is, is better the last two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good.
Than it was.
Well, they made, uh they also made some um significant upgrades in the data once we launched um Mission Max. And then it got hung up. And then they had to go back and do some reset of some of the data and that has helped as well.
To do it. Yeah, the complaints came after you went to Mission Max. So we, they thought it was tied to those changes. But I agree with Gloria, I haven't heard a complaint in the last week or two on either the audibles or the one bus away. But the positive side to that is those are both great things you've added over the years and very useful, especially to those we work with. And when they go down, they miss them.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that's, you know, is a positive that you have implemented both of those. Cause we know how many years we fought with drivers to make announcements and they just were afraid of the PAs.
We're still afraid.
Well, that's all right. And when it's audit, when it, when it makes its own announcement, that's okay, so that's great.
And, and we really do um want to hear when they don't make the announcement or we're having an audible issue. Cause it's sometimes specific to the vehicle. We found some of the speakers on the older buses were also crackly. I don't know how to describe that, it had static sound in it or snowy sound to it.
But if the audibles work and they don't make announcements, right?
Um when the audible works, they, they go.
You're right, okay.
But um when they don't work, they're required.
Okay, all right, well, I'll mention that. And then the other thing I just wanted to say, um that Raquel had on, um when you do, when you are ready to go out with PaaS web. Um David, our IT manager, would be happy to check in for you with jobs.
How long are you willing to load it out?
Well, he's worked with you all before when you were told you needed a website with um twenty-nine inch fonts and all that. You know, we, the software works for the website. So your, your goal is to make sure your, your website and whatever this PaaS web is will work with the magnification and the speech programs. And we'd be glad to.
We absolutely will, I bet. You know, I called you even on color side before.
I know, I know, I know. So, yeah, we'll be glad to work with you on that, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh before we have our round table, and please, uh people that are here, stick around for the round table. Um what, uh we need to approve our minutes. We have one more person that has been uh from our, our committee. Uh is there somebody that would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from last time?
I just have a correction for the minutes. Um on the minutes, it actually has me as, uh this is Raquel Pancho, it has me listed as being with McDonald Training Center. So I wanted to make that correction, I'm actually with the city of Tampa.
Thank you. And with the correction, is there a motion to approve last time's minutes?
More minutes?
Okay, the second?
I'll second.
And a second, all in favor to approve the minutes from last time signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone knows? Hearing that, the minutes are approved. Uh I wanna talk about the round table. One of the things I wanted to mention is uh Ms. Brown was talking about the complaints. Uh I know on the nineteenth, they have the, 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 the announcement that you're coming to the Memorial Hospital. It works fine when it's going south, but on the way back north, when you're going north of town, what happens is it's the, it's, it's uh sounding out at the time after it's already past the La Cicerone building, where I get off, by the way, the next stop. And of course, that's very confusing when you're getting, and I mean, I know it's only been a little over a month, but things like that need to be fixed. So I, I, the, I know the one bu- the one bus away is doing much better, but those announcements on the bus are not better. If anybody has any other comments, you know, that were they ride a bus? None. So is there anything else you wanna talk about for a few minutes? None?
No, I, I actually have a couple of comments. Um first, I wanted to thank Hart, uh recently, uh it was after the hurricane. Um at the joint alliance meetings, um many of the members shared extraordinary comments about the amount of inavailability of the buses during the hurricane, um in the evacuations. I wanted to, you know, share that feedback with you. I, 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 I think you guys weren't um able to attend that meeting. Um also to Camille, I appreciate your um quick responses to my emails. And I've had several consumers who have shared some concerns about um recent bus routes, uh changes and things like that. And your quick responsiveness has been really helpful. Um you know, it's nice to be able to address people's needs and, and have individuals respond. Recently, I did attend a National Federation of Blind meeting in October. And one of the um group members um expressed continued concerns about Yellow Cab denying uh transportation to people who have service animals. So I just wanted to raise that and just bring it to your concern again. Um I don't have any specific details on when those denials happen and such, but it, it sounds as if it's continuing to happen. And then also, I, too, I wanted to go back and revisit Arizona's comment about the trolley in Access, Arizona. I, I don't know what that, uh specifically what's happening with the trolley um in Access for people in wheelchairs. Is there not enough clearance?
The, 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 in, the, in um trolley, when you go over there, there's a, there's a chair, there's a edge. It is hanging out, you gotta go around that edge, it's very narrow.
Okay.
Uh it's just like, it's just like one of your old buses where you got, where you got the two wedges behind it a lot. It's just like that. Those, those buses need to be taken off, off the road. Cause they're too small, and they're, they're very narrow. And if you got a wedge here, they come, they're over your head, you gotta get the other wedge here. That's not happening. You gotta wedge here, that's one, one too long. You gotta squeeze between the dick and the wedge here. Put the other wedge here, behind the other wedge here. It is, take too long. Uh when you get on a wedge here, you get on a bus, it won't take two or three minutes to load you all out. With old buses, you're gonna have at least five to ten minutes.
Okay, we'll take a look. Those are gilling um buses, just like our forty-foot buses, but it's a thirty-five foot version. But it's the same width of bus that we have out on the forty-footers. Uh but we'll look at the seating confirm that it is ADA compliant, uh the entry into the bus.
It may, uh, it may be ADA compliant, but I'm just saying, it's all.
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments? Any other good comments? That was good to get some compliments.
I just want to add that um from a staff perspective, um what a loyal staff you have in our agency. Um and I was super proud of the folks that came out to assist with the evacuation and even the return of the evacuees um after the storm. Um on the uh weekend of, and then the return, we basically had a full staff that showed up all of maintenance. And upon return after the storm, people left their homes and families and came to work. And our absentee on that day when we returned was only fourteen book-offs, which is better than football Monday or F and L Friday. So you know what? You have to really um consider how committed our employees are to serving our community and coming out and making it happen. And um very distinctly, our routes that we have out there, our ten published evacuation routes served, uh were to serve four schools of the evacuation sites. Um and they opened at eight AM for the general public, the special needs shelters started on the day before. But on Saturday, um just prior to the storm, they opened at eight AM. And by ten AM, E O C was calling us and the, and the drivers letting us know those shelters were full. And that turned into go further out into the county and we went through a list of about uh sixty-three different schools, but we ended up serving forty. Um up till one-thirty in the morning before we had to finally cut it off and send our employees home as well. Um so magnificent work from our, our facilities, folks protecting all of the fleet. There were no damages, um there were no, um thank goodness fatalities in our area. We're super spared as a community. And to our employees that came out, we couldn't be prouder of their commitment to serving and coming back out and helping to restore people back to some normalcy. And um of course, food is an incentive and I'll give shout-outs to, to um yeah, the pizza, um pop, is it pop, no, Little Caesar's. Little Caesar's on Hillsborough Avenue was the only place that would take an order to feed um three hundred and something operators and a hundred and something maintenance folks on two hours' notice. Um about a hundred and fifty pizzas and I don't know how much else, but um it was a lot of fun when we brought that in. So if you ever have an entity and a desire to serve a lot of people, bring pizza, they'll come. So, um and then more importantly, I, I'm sure that you are aware that our CEO, Catherine Egan, has given her notice. And she will be moving on to Allegheny County in Pennsylvania, it's, and near Pittsburgh, as a CEO um there. So she will be leaving us, um effective January fifth is her last day. And so I'm, I'm sure you'll hear more notice about um and things coming about how we're going forward as an e- entity. Um and our board will make a decision about who will fill that position interim until they do a national search, so.
Well, I, I had one, one more thing in reviewing the um, the bylaws. It looks like it's about time to elect new officers. Um so I believe we probably need a motion to bring that up for the next meeting if you guys wanna address that in the next meeting.
We are very appropriate. I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
You need a second.
We need a second.
Who would like to second then?
We got a second.
Okay, I didn't hear, thank you.
Sorry. Need to use the mic.
Okay, well then, I think it's time to make a motion to, to say goodbye. And I'd like to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving. May you enjoy, enjoy your family. Uh and um, well, actually, whatever you celebrate, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and all of them. Uh hope that you all have the best this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you likewise.
Same to you.